Over a weekend and you'll hear exactly what everybody's dealing with.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, thank you for doing that. This is a no-brainer for me, especially if we can find the funds for, through the ship grant.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract and direct the chair to sign the contract.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Truly appreciate your support on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we gotta kill some time now.
Yeah, kill some time.
You are ahead of schedule, Mr. Chair.
And then Sheriff Troy Heck just left. Oh, well.
Mr. Chair, would you consider moving to Commissioner Updates?
Yeah.
That off of our-
Hey.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Commissioner Johnson, that's a great idea. Let's go to Commissioner Updates. I will start. I had, I had one meeting and that was last Monday with Sandy Sherburne on homelessness. We set up a meeting, uh, two people from Sterns, two people from Sherburne, and we had a great conversation and more to come on that. That's all I had. Next?
I can go. Um, I did, I had a Region Seven West Policy Committee meeting last week, actually in person finally at MINDOT, so multiple items talked about on there and also in regards, I think all the Commissioners saw their email from Chris Bird with kind of a highlight with where WATAB is in regards to their transportation economic development grant and that they're looking at that for, for that area. Um, just a reminder to Commissioners, if you're able to come tomorrow night's our Farm Family Recognition, they're scheduled to start at 6:45. They'd like everybody there by 6:40. So if you're able to come and be part of that presentation, that'd be great.
I'd, I'd love to be there, but I'm at a conference in Duluth-
Okay.
Tomorrow and Thursday and Friday.
I'll be there. Okay, great. That's all I had. Thank you.
Great. Next?
Me?
Yep, sure.
So, um, we had the SIDS deal on, uh, last Thursday afternoon. It inquired a quid a bit. There was a lot of, lot of reps there, Commissioners from Sherburne County and Benton County were there. Um, a lot of bullet points on what we need, what we don't need, and it all ties to funding that comes to our area eventually. So, I thought that was good. That was the first of, of probably three more that we have to have before. It's gotta be done by, I believe, the first of November to get approved this year. Um, I talked to Scott a little bit that, uh, we didn't have anybody from the city of Foley there, which was, um, probably should've had because all the other communities were representative. You know, Annandale, Mapleway, Buffalo, they all showed up with a city person plus then Commissioners or whatever. And, uh, Amanda is kinda heading, or one of the people that's heading that, so we're in good shape. You know, she, she actually called me and wanted to know if I was gonna show up, so we had some there. Um, then we had the One Water One Plan in Malaca. We adopted, we got the plan adopted or approved. We set up a board of people because we're done with the advisory. Now we're in the JP, uh, JPE. So we had to elect new, uh, new chair, new treasurer. Um, Jake Jansky from Isandy County is the new chairman with Commissioner Foby from Sherburne County as the alternate. Um, we had some entities that didn't enter into the joint powers agreement. Malax County, Anoka County, um, the upper or the lower Rum. So we got three that didn't. So they won't get to vote on projects that come forth, but they can be involved in the plan or in the process prior to that. But they do not have a seat at the board at this time on that. So I think three out of the sixteen or whatever that did not join it. And I think Malax County was, you know, was kinda disappointing because they have the largest part of the Rum River is in Malax County. But I think their, their board was, uh, their soil and water board joined, but not their county board. So they do not have a person on that board that will vote in the deal. Um, so some point in some time, we'll have to make a new appointment to that board after September. And it's only gonna consist of, we're hoping to limit that, the number of meetings that they have to three with no more than four every year. So it's not this ongoing thing that you, you know, it's a monthly deal. Um, so that's kinda good that it's getting wrapped up. Uh, you know, I think we got some good planners that take it and run it from there. Um, and then we had, uh, the BEP had their board meeting and the budget presentation. They did that, um, and that will stay flat for this year. Um, they also have, Marcello is gonna come back on a part-time basis. She's gonna go get her masters. So she has agreed, she agreed the day before to be, to come back, and I think she's gonna be working for another entity on the other part-time basis, but she's gonna go back to school to get her masters. So there's a chance we'll be able to retain her for a couple of years maybe. It's either that or she's, you know, by January she was gonna be sent back because her visa ran out. So she has to get an education or, or get a sponsored visa from something. And she was denied the visa to go back, to stay without going back to school. Uh, let's see, what else did I have? I think that was about it.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Commissioner Pop reminded me of the Mississippi One Watershed One Plan. I received an, an email from Kendra yesterday. The Clearwater River Watershed District did not sign our MOA, so we're on hold again on this whole project. And we had kinda talked about that. But also in addition, Kendra is going to be taking a different position in a different district, so we're gonna lose her in about two weeks. So-
Another thing is that Noel County Attorney stepped up to do the work for the, the Rum River One Water One Plan. So we're gonna go to outside counsel, but the, the cost won't be any more realistically because if, say Benton County's attorney did it, they were paid, you know, accordingly to that. But evidently, all the counties attorneys got together and nobody wants to do it.
Imagine that.
And I think part of it is due to workload. I think their workload is big enough. So, um, I can't remember what the firm was. They're out of St. Cloud. They're gonna look at contacting them to see Graven something.
Gray Plant Moody or?
No, not Gray Plant Moody. Graven something. Um, and they're gonna come, they're gonna, they had a sample contract of what it would cost, and it was two hundred and forty bucks per hour. But you gotta have an attorney when you're gonna start doing contracts.
Mm-hmm.
So somebody's gonna have to look at it. Um, all in all, it was pretty, I thought it was, that meeting was pretty good. We finally, it finally seemed like, hey, we got something done. You know, how many times you were spinning your wheels before. So, um, projects on the ground, I don't know. There's the monies, there's not a lot of money-
No.
For projects on the ground when you get all done. The time you do, you know, staff time. I mean, we're already accumulating staff time because we're out of the planning money. So, um, Tiffany from Isandy County's just co- mounting up the hours and eventually we'll have to take that and pay her right away. So it's an eye-opener on what this is really gonna be when it's all said and done.
Yeah.
You know, but we're a little different here because we sit in Benton County. That has a great soil and water deal and they get a lot of money, you know. I guess if we were on the other end of it and we, we sat here and we were one of the counties on the bottom end of the receiving toll and pole, we probably would say, hey, this is a good deal.
Right. Great. Thank you for that one. Commissioner Pinsky?
Okay. I had my ECRB board, uh, on Wednesday. That is a very dry board. Um, it, a lot of things are already predetermined, like budgets and everything. So you gotta, we went through a bunch of budget stuff and, uh, we're, we're somewhat lucky on the radios because we, we have new radios. We're not in the boat that a lot of people are in because they are very expensive. But they're, we're really pushing for funding moving forward to keep these up to date. Um, BEP quarterly, I apologize and thank you for whoever cleaned up my plate. I had fire call. I had to leave early on that one. Um, did have a CARES meeting, uh, uh, on last Thursday, and that was, uh, that was good. We just, the biggest thing that came out is we feeding the volunteers on the tenth, and Commissioner Johnson and I have been in communication on that. Um, then I had the EMS, uh, board. Um, one of the things that came out is that opioid settlement, everybody's got their hands out, and, uh, counties are still working very hard to get their boards to, um, give some of that money to the EMS, EMS, uh, board, uh, for support moving forward. Uh, this board provides naloxone and all of this stuff, Narcan, um, for a lot of departments, and that's how, that, that's where some of the money could come from, uh, from the opioid settlement into there to help provide more of this stuff. It really goes directly to what the problem was. So we're, uh, boards are continuing to work on that. Other than that, that's, that's really about it.
So, I mean, are they still discussing other sources of funding on there? I mean, that's a, it's a tough deal, ain't it?
It's a, well, we, the, this board gets funded by Seatbelts and it's two thousand dollars a, a month is what you're getting in, twenty-eight hundred dollars. We went through all of them.
Yeah.
So it's not a lot, but what you do for the whole region, and there's a lot of counties involved in this, uh, it, what you do for the region with, with basically just going in these little ambulance services and, and what law enforcement have to deal with, with the, the overdoses and stuff. It, this goes directly to what that settlement was meant for. And I mean, obviously, everybody under the sun has their hand out for it, and we've heard some very, very weird, um, people that have asked for money within organizations and counties to, to get, to get some money. But this is gonna be a little bit tougher than I think everybody thought to get all the boards on, on, on-
Yeah.
Even ground.
I forgot about the most important one, library. So, we had our, we had our library board meeting, uh, at, uh, the twenty-first, I believe it was. Um, they did decide we got a three percent people shortage when people working for the library. We're three percent short across the board. Um, and no frontline pay. There was a lot of discussion on frontline pay, um, whether they should receive it or not receive it, and they can't. They, they, they don't qualify. There was, and then there was some discussion about whether we should spend some reserves and pay some of these people, and that didn't fly very well. So, um, the average people that are quitting are, they're leaving the positions right now are, they're making sixteen, about sixteen to sixteen and a half dollars an hour when they leave and look for something else, which you can see why they're leaving that when you can go to McDonald's for eighteen. Uh, then we're looking at starting our contracts. Um, we're starting on September second, I believe, our first contract meeting. And, um, they give it, there was a lot of discussion on, on what they wanted to see out of the contracts. Um, they would like to see a three-year, but go with a two if you have to. Um, you know, I, what's gonna happen, they don't know. We got two unions that are working there there, and then whatever happens in the union usually, you know, like here, flows over to the non-union people. Um, I don't know, you know, they were, they were looking for a, some of the recommendations were, uh, two and a half, you know, two and a half or, oh, three, two and a half, two and a half. And if you can't get them to agree to that, then cut off one year, go back in two. But they sure would like a, a three-year.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlangen?
Um, I was at the BEP meeting and everybody was. Um, the Central Minnesota Council on Aging Board, and one of the things they talked about was, um, age-friendly St. Cloud, United Way, and the C O A working on facilitating, facilitating, um, to end total isolation and loneliness. So they're all three working together on that in the community. Um, and then just rearranging all their funds that they have to the right places to meet the needs. Then I went to the open house for the APO, and the only thing on our list coming up was the Highway ten twenty-three. And they said they're gonna keep that open. They'll build one bridge first so that traffic can keep going at all times, not having to have detours. That was one positive I heard anyway.
Is that it?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Now we'll reconvene our regular board meeting and turn it over to our Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll call to order our Human Services Board. Um, Bob, any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No.
Okay, thank you. Look for a motion for that.
So-
Second.
Motion a second to approve our agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our consent agenda items one and two. What are your wishes with those?
Move approval.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion regards to our consent agenda items one and two? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Bob, consider the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three contract for Bentonstern's Education District Early Intervention Program for a mental health professional to provide reflective consultation and home visiting.
We have two school mental health contracts. I'm gonna ask Nikki Knowles to come up if you have any questions.
Good morning.
So I am requesting approval of the two contracts paid for through the Children's Mental Health Collaborative. Um, the first one you mentioned is for the Bentonstern's Education District. Um, that one is for a contracted person to come in and provide consultation to their staff. Um, any questions on that one?
I don't have any.
I don't.
Okay. And then the second one is a contract for Lighthouse Family Services to provide, um, services in the Foley School District. This was previously held by the Village Family Services. Um, they are no longer able to staff that program, so Lighthouse requested a, um, to take over that contract for the, again, for the Foley Public Schools.
All right. Any questions on that one? We will take these separately, but any questions while Nikki's here?
So what is, what is Lighthouse Family Services consistent when they're in the Foley School District?
Sure. So it's a counseling, um, agency. They're housed out of Malaca. They will have a therapist come into the school. Um, I believe it's once a week in all three of the schools to provide any mental health services. So the Children's Mental Health Collaborative is a collaborative to, um, fill the gap of services. So if there's any uninsured students or other services who need, children who need mental health services within the school, they'll able to meet with those therapists on-site as opposed to meeting up with them at the facility or any in-home services.
Is, is that recommended by teachers or counselors? Is it just recommended to this group by now?
So this has been a contract for many, many years held by the village. Um, it was transferred over to, um, Lighthouse just this year. It is, it's been a great positive partnership between the schools and the, um, the agency to provide that services. So the school's able to identify those kids that need those services right now in school, be able to send down the children to meet with the therapist, and then hopefully be able to move on with their day after some consultation with that therapist.
All right. Any other questions for Nikki? We'll move on the, considering the twenty-two, twenty-three contract for Bentonstern's Education District.
I make a motion to approve the contract for Bentonstern's Educational District Early Intervention Program for Mental Health Professional to Provide Reflective Consulting and Home Visiting.
All right. Is there a second on it?
I'll second.
And a second. Any other discussion in regards to the Bentonstern's contract? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to consider the twenty-two contract for Lighthouse.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion a second on the contract for Lighthouse Child and Family Services. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's also carried. Thank you, Nikki. Anything else, Bob?
I have nothing else unless there's any questions.
All right. We'll adjourn our Human Services Board and-
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Turn it back over to the Chair for our regular board meeting.
Thank you. Now we'll reconvene our regular board meeting. Next up, Chris Bird, County Engineer.
All right. Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a picture, so just allow me a moment to bring that up. So I come before you today with, uh, an update and maybe a request. So here we are. We are in, very much in the middle of our construction, uh, maintenance season, and we have a lot of maintenance to do when it comes to, uh, replacing pavement markings. Um, you, I don't know, some of you may recall, last year, we really needed to get to striping, uh, in Sock Rapids. Due to material shortages, we weren't able to get to that until this summer. We completed that, uh, two weeks ago, striping the Three Up the Hill, uh, project that we constructed several years ago. That striping needed to be replaced. Benton Drive in Sock Rapids and Sartell needed to be replaced. That, those, uh, maintenance striping ate up our budget this year. And we have about thirty-five, thirty-six miles of road that still need to have, uh, paint striping, uh, replaced on it. Uh, we've gotten quotes to do that work, and we need about fifty thousand dollars more to complete this striping. Um, from a pavement perspective, striping is a safety feature. If you don't know where the lanes are at night, uh, we could have potentially hazardous situations. Um, in pink here on this map, these are roads that we had to patch with our maintenance, uh, patching budget overlay this year. So it's new black pavement, no striping. Um, and then a lot of this in blue is just old roads. It has not had the striping, restriped on it in a number of years. Uh, it's maybe barely there visible during the day, but certainly has no reflectivity at night. Uh, so these are the most critical. This is not, uh, all the bad pavement markings in the county, but what we see is the most critical that really need to have some sort of striping, um, you know, painted on it, uh, still yet this summer. Um, yeah. So, to make a long story short, we need about fifty thousand dollars more in that budget to complete this, this safety, uh, concern on our, our county roads.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schlangen?
I have one question. Um, when they, when they did the Benton Drive Two and they worked on Frank, Franklin Avenue, and they haven't put the striping on that, around that S-curve there that, yeah, so you can't really tell where you're going on that either. So do you know who's gonna be responsible for putting striping there?
On Franklin Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that would be one of the cities, I believe, then.
That's a city.
Cause that's not a county.
So Sock Rapids?
Yeah, that's in, I'm not sure which street that is actually. So Benton Drive is-
It's a frontage road from Chan up to Benton Drive.
Humane Society and all that's on that road.
Oh, yeah, that's prob-, that, yeah, that's probably Sock, uh, St. Cloud, actually.
Yeah, that's St.
Oh, it's in Sock Rapids.
It's, it, half of it, yep, it's-
Then that would be, yeah. Um, Benton Drive doesn't become our responsibility until the Sock Rapids, uh, Bridge in downtown Sock Rapids. Then north all the way up to Highway ten again is our responsibility. So yeah, Commissioner Schlangen, where you're talking about, that would be a Sock Rapids City, um, responsibility.
Yep, and St. Cloud.
And we did receive a lot of complaints last year and even beginning of this year of Benton Drive and Sock Rapids that the striping was poor and hard to see at night to tell where the lanes are. So we knew that was something we, we had to do. Those are, those are high-volume routes. A lot of traffic travels those on our county roads. The concern with these other rural roads, they're high-speed roads. So very little margin of error if you don't have a, a good delineation of where the lane is. Um, drivers could not be in their lanes.
Commissioner Pop?
So, Chris, I heard you say that we didn't get to some of these last year. Did we have any funds carry over then?
Uh, unfortunately with three oh, so the, yeah, our line item comes out of our department's thirteen dash three oh two, which is construction, uh, uh, or the maintenance, uh, department. We didn't have any left over at all, um, out of three oh two. So, um-
Mr. Chair.
Chris, you can tell me when you think we should talk about source of funds, and you and I have spoken about this.
Yeah, Monty and I have, uh, spoken, uh, briskly about this. So, um, I think there may be an opportunity here that wasn't something that we were anticipating as a county, something that just kinda like popped up in the last, uh, week or, or so.
Sure. I can, I can cover this real briefly.
Maybe I should just put this up on the-
Yeah, I won't worry about it. So we got this letter from MCAT, and it was about a week ago. Fifteen thousand. And MCAT is going to be making a special distribution of excess work comp funds to its member counties. Uh, the total statewide is nine point six million. And, uh, Benton County's portion of this will be a hundred and fifteen thousand. So, um, I, I think I'd recommend if you're inclined to is you could, you could put fifty thousand of this into Chris's Fund thirteen budget, and that could cover the striping issue at least for this year. Um, there's no restrictions on how these resources are used, even though they do come from the work comp, uh, fund. And so that's a, a possible source, at least to kinda get through things this year. Did you also wanna talk about equipment too later? Well, yeah, we can talk about that. Uh, that's something you were definitely gonna hear about next week in my budget presentations, our equipment requests. Um, we had requested a pickup for this current year. The, and due to widespread unavailability of, uh, motor vehicles and pickups, it was actually gonna be carried over into next year. And this, so this is a, uh, we've now since found a vehicle, um, but, um, the price is more than what we were anticipating for purchasing in this year. So this, this source of, uh, revenue may be a potential source to cover that cost of replacing that, uh, twenty-year-old pickup that we originally planned on replacing in twenty-twenty-two. Since we didn't have the funds for it, uh, this year, I was gonna roll it into twenty-twenty-three's budget request. But if we may be able to take care of it still in this current budget year, that would reduce the request for next year. Um-
Really?
So-
Did you say that?
I, I, I did say that. I apologize.
That's, that's what we're facing. The, everything that we do is costing money. So much of what we do is dependent on, uh, petroleum, fuel prices, and we think about our budget, the large part of our budget is purchasing of materials so we can do our work, whether it's striping materials, which last year had a, you know, a nationwide shortage of materials. And this year, the prices were just, uh, higher than they were in previous years. Those are, those are petrochemicals that are produced from, uh, crude oil and those kinda things. All that is, it, it has a compounding effect in terms of what we do with roads and bridges.
Mr. Chair.
Chris, do we have enough material for the thirty-three miles of striping on hand?
Yeah. Oh, so this is, this is actually gonna be done by the contractor. Our contractor says they have the material. Um, and that's what, uh, the, our quote is, is just under fifty thousand dollars to have them, uh, that would cover the labor and materials to, to stripe these thirty-five, thirty-six miles of road.
Commissioner Pop?
So, Monty, the hundred and fifteen thousand, is that above what they normally get?
Yeah, that's, this is in excess of the normal MCIT dividend. This is-
Okay.
Special one-time distribution. Yeah, over and above the dividend. Yep.
That's a good deal.
It is, yeah. Commissioner Johnson?
Chris, just to expand on that a little bit, historically, what have you, I mean, this is fifteen hundred dollars a mile to stripe.
Yeah, that's, that's, well, so we're about a, a thousand dollars a mile a couple years ago. We have a hundred thousand dollar line item, and we were able to do ninety to a hundred miles of roadway. So, things like Sock Rapids, the Three Up the Hill, Benton Drive, those are multi-lane roadways that those, Benton Drive through Sock Rapids is a five-lane roadway. Um, Three is a four-lane roadway with the roundabouts and everything. That ate up a hundred thousand dollars worth of striping. So where we were at a thousand dollars a mile a few years ago, yeah, we're, we're up to fifteen hundred dollars a mile. So-
Wow.
And really, yeah, that's, I think that's really, it's material-dependent. That's the material prices are driving, driving that.
Commissioner Pinsky?
Just a clarification, Monty. Um, this MCIT money that's coming that's over and above, just so everybody's on the same page, the money, everything, insurances are all going up, it, but they have to refund it even though it's gonna go back to them later on, correct?
Well, work comp kinda goes up and down based upon your experience. Sure, there's a general trend upwards as medical inflation costs go up, but we've seen substantial year-to-year variations in our premium based upon our claims, our experience. So, again, it just, it depends upon largely the claims experience. So-
And I think-
Yeah.
Here, we've been trying to do a lot more with safety, trying to eliminate them claims.
Right.
I think that's maybe we're seeing some of the benefits now.
So this was a discussion item.
I think we're looking for general consensus. Is there a general consensus to take this pot of money and, and at least put fifty thousand into Chris's maintenance budget to cover the striping? And I think we're also talking about it, is there, is there sufficient consensus essentially to put the balance of it into Fund thirty for, uh, this, the, the vehicle that Chris just mentioned?
Chair, the vehicle that you wanna replace, what, give us, give me some data on that.
So replacing a twenty-year-old, uh, pickup that's, uh, I don't know, it's, it's part of the fleet. It's used by engineering technicians, used by maintenance sometimes. Uh, replacement of that vehicle is, is forty-seven thousand dollars. So-
What was your budget for that?
It was about thirty-seven thousand dollars.
So you need another ten thousand?
Well, I need the whole forty-seven thousand. That's because we did replace a motor grader. So, when you think about our budget cycle, it's in July where we're getting prices for the next year. By the time, through, even through state bid contract, motor grader came in, the motor grader ended up eating up the whole, uh, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of capital equipment that was approved for twenty-twenty-two.
Didn't, didn't you find a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that?
It was a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty-five?
So then, yeah, that was from, uh, one- That was from, uh, one-time Chrisa funds. That was a federal money that was being given to road authorities. So then, then the board was committing, as I understand, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which would be levy to transfer into Fund thirty to make that three hundred and thirty thousand dollar total.
So I think it took every nickel of the base budget to cover the grader.
It did.
Leaving nothing for anything else.
Correct.
So was that greater budgeted lower than, than what it actually came in at?
It had to be.
Yes, yes, it was, yeah, so, yeah.
So we traded a grader in?
We did, yes.
Can I ask what we got for that grader?
Yes, through, through the, it was a John Deere grader with the dealership was about forty thousand dollars. So that covered, the trade-in actually covered probably the, the walk and roll, uh, compactor attachment that we, uh, put on the back of it.
Okay, that's a good deal. Boy, that forty thousand don't seem like enough money in my book for a trade-in. And I, I think we need to watch this a little bit better on our, when we deal with these people because used equipment is right to, I bet that grader is going on at eighty thousand bucks when they resell.
You know, I, I did, well, that was brought up, I know, that last year at this discussions. And I started watching auctions and stuff. The number of hours in the year of that, um, we just, I just wasn't seeing, uh, those kind of prices. It, it is interesting. We paid about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that motor grader, brand new in two thousand and two. So now they're, they're three hundred thousand dollars for those motor graders.
But I mean, all the equipment, I mean, I was at an auction where a nineteen-year-old tractor that sold for forty-seven thousand, brand new, brought fifty-eight thousand on the auction, what did they call it, like forty-five hundred dollars on it, forty-five hundred dollars? And you're seeing that across every sector of deals. So, you know, when you're buying equipment, no matter what it is, we need to make sure that we're getting the highest trade-in value that we can get one way or the other.
Mr. Chair?
In this economy, you know, we, the new prices are jacked up so bad.
Yeah, I agree.
You have to make sure that our, our, what we have is used equipment is, we're getting every dollar out of it we can. You know, I'm, I know what, how dealers work. Dealers are out to give you as low as they possibly can. And if you're not a hardball negotiator, you're probably going to the cleaners.
Commissioner Pinske?
Mr. Chair, I just want to get back to a key point that Chris made earlier. I want you to clarify that. He had said that your budget will go down next year, this, or this next week?
Well, so, my equipment request, so, uh, based on our equipment management, uh, work that we do, there's about four hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment needing to be replaced. And I know that was probably a huge ask. We, we had talked a lot this previous, this current budget year about setting aside a capital equipment, uh, fund that hopefully we can budget, uh, you know, a consistent amount and that fund builds up over time to replace that. So if we consistently, if we could commit to staying at that same level, um, I wouldn't be asking for the vehicle, the, the pickup truck replacement next year. We would take that, go ahead and take that this year, so.
Is that in, is that pickup in here, in the fight, our book?
So it was in the two thousand twenty-two budget.
True, okay.
I think Chris is saying, look, he used all of his budget to buy the grader.
Okay.
So he could push it into next year, but he's going to have to ask for how much more?
Yeah, forty-seven thousand dollars more.
Over the thirty-three hundred and thirty thousand. So we could use these resources and pay for it this year and just leave next year's equipment budget at three thirty. Most likely, as if, as if equipment costs continue to escalate, we're probably going to have to look at that three thirty and say, is it really the right number?
Correct, yeah.
But we probably can live with it next year, but assuming that we can use these resources to buy that truck this year. My experience is that I wouldn't get too hefty on purchasing any equipment within the next one to two years because as we move down into recession and we move to supply demand, I think your equipment is going to get thirty, forty percent, thirty percent for sure, cheaper as we move forward. I mean, this is all based on the shortage that happened, the electronical upset with it. I mean, right now I wouldn't go out and buy a, you know, plainly used or a brand new tractor to save my butt because it's just not, it's not profitable for me. And I think we need to look at the county in the same way.
Okay, so first of all, let's, what do you guys want to do with the fifty thousand for striping?
I'll move that we move the fifty thousand into the striping, that's a safety factor.
That's a safety.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion for that in a second. Any further discussion on that item? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So you're going to get the fifty thousand for the striping, Chris?
I'll bring back a, a consent item to amend Chris's budget at some point in the future.
Today, right now?
Let's, no, that's some future meeting, it'll be on your consent agenda.
Yep, we'll do that. Next would be the vehicle, that forty-seven thousand. What do you guys want to do with that? Do you want to take it out of that fund too?
I agree with what Mr. Commissioner Pop says, but I also look at a truck that's twenty-one years old. I, I would move to, let's take this money out of this fund and get this vehicle there, it's available. I'll, I'll make that motion.
For?
You just, uh.
Forty-seven.
For, for forty-seven in your motion?
Yep, to cover the cost.
The MCIT funds?
Yep, correct.
Okay, we got a motion. Somebody second that?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Pop, you second that? Get a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. So you got your funding, Chris?
Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate that. Monty, may remember, we're, we're in a tough spot when it comes to equipment. Twenty years ago, the county, I don't know, took out how many millions of dollars note
Lower million, yeah, for.
To purchase a bunch of new equipment. And that's what's happening. All that equipment is aging out now because there was a big purchase of new equipment at that time. So we're, we're doing our best to not, to, to make that last and make that not as big of a hit to replace all that same stuff at the same time.
I, I know that they're doing a really good job, but also, um, the equipment will last longer in today's world and we have a state-of-the-art shop and our maintenance and our stuff on our equipment should be top-notch, that we should be able to stretch this equipment a little bit longer. But, you know, I mean, we didn't, twenty years ago, we didn't have the shop, you know, today. And it was hard to service equipment over here.
Yeah.
And that today's, today's records, we got records, we got everything else, we should be able, you know, we should be able to stretch that out. A piece of equipment that used to last ten thousand hours is easily at fifteen to eighteen thousand in today's world.
Anything else, Chris?
That's all I have. I'll stick around for the later meeting, yeah.
Good, thank you. Next, comments or concerns by Commissioners? Okay, nothing? Set committee of whole meetings?
He's gone.
Committee of the whole meetings, Monty? Setting committees of the whole. The soil and water tour practices is on September thirteenth. Um, my recollection is they ask you to arrive around eight-thirty, uh, but we'll.
When is it?
September thirteenth.
Commissioner Heinon.
September thirteenth.
Allegagan.
These soil and water tour practices.
I will be exercising.
Uh, so plan on about eight-thirty. Usually the bus, the bus leaves about nine and it's an all-day event, so and they'll stop for lunch. Typically, I know they like to get a sense of who's going to attend, is they planned for lunch? Is there, could we get a show of hands of who plans on going? Who might be?
I'm in on it.
That's three?
I will not be there.
Three?
Four, maybe.
Oh, Commissioner Johnson? Your yes? Okay, then four, okay, could you, we'll, we'll, we'll let them know? All right. I'm going to miss that one, I'll be in Kansas, I need to, oops. Oh, we got another one. Oh, okay, what we got? Oh, of course, AMC fall policy conferences are coming up, September fourteenth through sixteenth at Arrowhead and Alexandria. Maybe at this point we could get a sense of who's going to go and, and I think Beth then can contact you individually about your, your lodging wishes, but perhaps at this point we could get a sense of who's going to be going to the AMC policy conferences.
I'm going, yes.
Every, no, Commissioner?
I will not be there.
All but Commissioner.
I'll be here.
Everyone but Commissioner Heinon, okay. And that's September fourteenth through sixteenth at Alexandria. Okay, so we'll.
I'll, I'll just go for the two days.
Sure. Yeah, again, we'll, we'll, we'll begin by registering you and I'll ask Beth to speak with you individually about your lodging, your wishes and so on. Yeah, yep. Okay. You had on your calendar a, an emergency management training in September. And I was contacted by a person at the state who said that the individual doing the training now has a scheduling conflict. So we'd like to remove that from the committee of the whole calendar. And then once our new emergency manager director is hired, then we'll reschedule that at that time. So just, we'll take that one off your, and I don't recall when that was in September, Beth.
It's the twenty-seventh.
Yep.
Yeah, so please take that one off your calendar, the emergency management training in September. Let's see here. You're invited to the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation Midyear All-Investor Meeting. It's on August twenty-fifth. It's, begins at three-thirty, August twenty-fifth, three-thirty, uh, at the airport hangar number five. August twenty-fifth, three-thirty, St. Cloud Airport. Uh, they are asking for reg, pre-registration. Could we get a sense of who would be interested in going? Beth, Commissioner Schlangen?
And how soon do you need to know this, Monty?
Um, you know, I don't know, I'm sorry. It, it doesn't tell me a deadline here.
It's been out there for a whole while and then you don't.
Yeah.
I know it has, but I've got a conflict, but you should probably just put me down, just.
What time does that start?
Three, three-thirty.
Thirty.
St. Cloud Airport, hangar five.
I'm not trying to be there.
Did, I'm sorry, so I think we'll all, I think we're all going to plan on trying to be there, yeah.
Yep.
So we'll register all, everyone? Okay, that's easy. Got that, Beth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, this was the, this is sort of an after the fact, we just want to make sure this is in the record. This was the SEDS meeting, um, that I believe Commissioner Apop mentioned. This is the SEDS meeting on July twenty-seventh at one o'clock in Wake Park. We just want to make sure that's in the record that that was a recognized committee of the whole.
Yeah, that's what he talked about.
Yeah.
Just had to make.
So that's that. I got one, I've got one more. So you've, you've got the five proposals from the architectural firms, uh, for space studies. My recommendation is that, uh, we would meet with and, and you all have an opportunity to interview and meet with each of these, each of these five firms. So I would suggest that we, um, set a day or set two half-days, something along those lines, to meet with these five firms. So I would probably, you know, go out a couple, three weeks to give them time to prepare and assemble their presentations and their teams that will be here. Let's see, here we set on August second. You know, I know this is the week of the fair, next week we're doing budget, budget meetings. So I would suggest possibly the week of the twenty-second.
How about the twenty-second?
Or the week of the twenty-ninth, or you could push it into September if you wanted to.
Let's try to avoid September, please.
I can't do the twenty-second. That week's going to be tough.
Which, the week of twenty-seventh, twenty-second is, is, is kind of tough, okay?
How about the week of the twenty-ninth?
Week of the twenty-ninth.
How about the twenty-ninth? Twenty-ninth works.
You going to do all five in one day?
No. Um, let me just check my own. I have, I know I've got something with the twenty, on Monday, the twenty-ninth, okay.
Are you thinking an hour presentation for each, Monty, or?
I think that's probably sufficient, yeah, yeah.
It's five hours.
You know, I'm, I'm thinking this is a substantial decision and I think it's important to meet with these folks and get a sense of their capabilities, so. So you want to, you want to, you want to do, um, there's five, so maybe a couple in the morning and then the rest in the afternoon, or three in the morning, three, a couple in the afternoon? Or you want to split it two days? You know, if you can have, have two days, it tends to give them a little more flexibility. It's like they got, you know, it's up to you all. You want to be here all day or you want to be two half-days?
Could we do nine to noon and then one to three, or?
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
Get it done in one day?
Not on the thirtieth though, I got.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
No.
Thirtieth, I got a.
Yeah.
AMC extension, meaning it.
So the twenty-ninth, nine to noon and one to three?
Let's try to get that scheduled for the twenty-ninth month.
So nine to noon and then one to, one to three, okay, got it.
Okay.
King. And that's all we got?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the cause as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Now we will.
Just recess?
Yes, we will recess our regular board meeting and, and take a two-minute break, please, before we get into the ditch authority. Okay, at this time we call a order of the Benton County Ditch Authority meeting. Uh, I will let everybody know we've got two ditches in front of us today. Uh, but at ten-thirty we will have to break, we have a meeting at ten-thirty, so we'll try to get through both ditches before that. Uh, approve or amend the agenda?
No changes. Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented, second.
Got a motion and a second and any further discussion? Call the question, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approve or amend the meeting minutes of June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, got a motion and a second and any further discussion? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next up, conduct a public hearing on re- repair report for County Ditch Three. Uh, there will be a public hearing, but before the public comments, we will hear from the county staff, Chris?
All right, so we're here today to have a public hearing on the repair report for County Ditch Three. We did receive a re- a valid repair petition dated February tenth, two thousand and twenty, um, and that was filed with the county on February twelfth, twenty-twenty. We appointed an engineer and ordered the repair report back in February eighteenth of two thousand and twenty. And then we stayed the, the, the proceedings for repair so that we could complete the redetermination of benefits process. And then on May third, two thousand and twenty-two, we concluded the redetermination of benefits and determined that County Ditch Three, uh, provides a total value of benefits of two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars. Um, then we, we filed a repair report on May fourth of two thousand and twenty-one, um, uh, actually before we completed the, the redetermination of benefits. So, um, we are here today to hear a presentation from, um, our consulting engineer, Houston Engineering, on the findings of their repair report. Um, so unless there's any questions before we get started, I'd like to go ahead and turn the meeting over to Garrett Munson, uh, of Houston Engineering.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, Garrett, can you hear us?
Hi Ken, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Wonderful. Uh, as, has been outlined, our presentation today is on our repair report that we prepared for County Ditch Three. Uh, and that's what we're gonna lay out here for you today. So, a little bit on what we planned to discuss. Uh, we're gonna give a broad overview of, of Benton County as drainage authority and what that means. Uh, just a quick reminder for the Board of Commissioners, this is the first, uh, public hearing taken on this system outside of the redetermination of benefits effort. So in terms of a one-oh-three E activity, um, that has included our engineering services, uh, because we have been doing it much throughout the county, I just wanted to highlight that, that's why we're gonna do this quick little overview at the beginning. Uh, then we're gonna talk about the standard for decision on a repair and the petition received, uh, and how our report relates to that. Uh, we'll talk, uh, high-level overview of that engineered repair report that we prepared. Uh, talk about some of the anticipated schedule for repairs, should they be ordered? And then, as you mentioned, movement of public comment after the presentation. So just a, a quick primer on public drainage management, uh, for anybody in the room who maybe this is their first time being involved in a proceeding like this. Uh, Benton County is serving as the drainage authority for County Ditch Three. Uh, so in this, you know, circumstance, the county is acting not necessarily under the powers of the county, if you will, but the Board of Commissioners are, have authority under Minnesota Statute one-oh-three E as a drainage authority. So it's kind of a different habit, uh, for the organization. Uh, the drainage system is owned by the landowners that pay for it or assess for it, are the benefited landowners, and that was determined through that redetermination of benefits. Uh, and then the drainage authority acts in the best interest of those collective benefited landowners. Uh, so those benefited landowners have, uh, the right to drain to the drainage system within reason, uh, as a design capacity, and they also have the right to petition for activities such as the, uh, petition for repair that was received. Uh, then, when receiving a petition or review of the conditions of the system, the drainage authority can take different actions, including repair, uh, on that drainage system to serve the collective interest of the benefited landowners. Uh, today's, uh, proceeding is for a drainage system repair, uh, and it was petitioned for under, uh, State Statute Section one-oh-three E seven-one-five. And in that statute, it identifies a couple standards for decision. Number one, are the repairs necessary? Um, is, is there something that's precluding the drainage system for book, providing its design capacity? And then secondly, are the repairs as recommended by an engineer in the best interest of the lands affected by the drainage system? Meaning, would doing a repair restore that drainage? And/or what other ancillary effects would it have? Then in addition to the criteria identified in that, you know, one-oh-three E, section seven-one-five, uh, of course, there's always other considerations in drainage law, making sure we're complying with state and federal regulations as well as considering environmental impact of any action. So this is, these are the criteria we're reviewing when taking a look at what a repair would be of the drainage system. So a brief overview of CD Three, it is located in the southeast corner of the city of Sauk Rapids. Uh, it discharges into storm sewer. The lower end of this system was previously abandoned, uh, when it was converted to storm sewer, uh, off to the west. Um, so now what remains is about forty-one hundred linear feet of open channel ditch. Uh, there are about seven-hundred-nine acres of benefit, and as I mentioned, uh, this process was initiated by a valid petition for repair, as Chris identified. Uh, just a, a note that the benefits were re- redetermined, as Chris identified. Um, this hearing is not the note, is not the forum for discussing those benefits. This is just pertaining to, uh, the repair as petitioned and reviewed by the engineer. So in terms of trying to determine are repairs necessary, uh, we first take a look at the current conditions of the drainage system. Uh, and it's not a big drainage system, but when we did take a look at it, we noted, uh, a lot of vegetation and accumulated sediment within the channel itself. So the lower part of the screen here, you can see the, uh, profile of the drainage system. That dashed line is the existing ditch bottom, where you can see the accumulated sediment primarily downstream, uh, just east of the state highway. Uh, and that kinda solid line, uh, tracking along there is the, uh, repair profile that we would recommend consistent with the design profile of the drainage system. Uh, as you can see, there's a couple culverts along there, only one of which is situated on the public drainage system. The other two are immediately upstream and downstream of the crossing, but we took a look at all of those for their capacity in our, uh, repair report. Uh, but we did note, uh, there that there are up to two feet of accumulated sediment within the channel, and then that heavy vegetation, which is a major consideration when looking at the condition of a drainage system. Uh, not only does it impede, you know, hydraulic capacity by slowing water down, when water levels rise, you know, brush and vegetation will hold that water back, but it also makes the inspection and maintenance of the drainage system, you know, in between events, uh, much more difficult. So part of the responsibilities of a drainage authority is to complete regular inspections, uh, and the relative inability to access the drainage system for easy inspection makes that activity very difficult. Um, so we also identified some, some fences along the way that don't seem to be in use, uh, and a number of other items causing access to be difficult. But what we did note at the field was also the presence of the existing spoil pile, uh, which is helpful so that there is that slight firm to be able to traverse along the drainage system. Uh, so the repair as recommended in our report has two components, uh, two main components. The tree clearing and removals to get rid of that vegetation right adjacent to the ditch and completely within the channel itself. And then, of course, the open channel excavation of restoring the channel bottom to its design grade, uh, as originally constructed. Uh, we note that, as I mentioned, there are three culverts on the system. Uh, so we took a look at those with a hydraulic analysis. Uh, and we determined that all three culverts are appropriately sized. And when I say appropriately sized, that means for the purposes of public drainage. So we're typically looking at a, a two-year event, uh, for overtopping of like a private crossing or, or field crossing, if you will. And then we take into consideration the design criteria of the roadway, uh, that is a public crossing. And when I say public crossing, I mean a, a crossing owned by a public entity, uh, as not to be confused with a crossing that is owned by the public drainage system. Uh, so in this case, you know, we took a look at County Road Seventy-four, that is sized to handle the fifth-year, uh, event without overtopping the road. US Highway Ten can handle the hundred-year event without overtopping the road. Um, and just a note that repair of drainage systems is not likely to affect large flood events, uh, but will definitely impact smaller events and the ability of the drainage systems to invade their design event flows within the channel itself. Meaning, you know, you can get a two-year event or a couple inches of rain and you're less likely to pop out of the banks of the ditch, uh, because that capacity's to invade a flow in there. Uh, just a note that these drainage systems throughout the county, they act as outlets. Uh, they're not meant to drain their entire drainage area of its surface water. Uh, it is still the responsibility of landowners and, and other parties to get those surface waters drained to the outlet. Uh, the outlet simply serves as the conveyance to get the water out of the area. Um, and the lateral effect of these drainage systems is not large. So the presence of a drainage system either on your land or in your drainage area does not mean you will not have flooding issues on your land. You are, as a landowner, you're still responsible for your surface water drainage. So the effects of a proposed repair, uh, would be that the flooding depth and duration will be reduced on adjacent parcels, just right in the immediate vicinity of the drainage system, as well as any, uh, lands that have a private conveyance that drains right to the drainage system that may be currently in a tailwater condition. Meaning, there's stagnant water in the ditch, backs up into that, you know, private drainage infrastructure. Uh, cleaning of the channel will allow water to drain faster, so even if your peak flood elevation is approximately the same, uh, the duration for which that water is on the landscape should be much shorter. Uh, we'll see the reduction of stagnant water within the channel itself. Uh, there was a lot of stagnant water during the survey, and that's likely due to that two feet of accumulated sediment at the downstream end causing essentially a storage or ponding effect within the channel itself. And then a, a critical piece of this is regaining access for future management. Um, as I noted before, this is a responsibility of the drainage authority under Minnesota State Statute to participate in inspection and maintenance activities. Uh, you know, if you need to go in there to remove a lever dam or a waterfall or some other obstruction, uh, that is blocking the channel. Uh, taking a look at some of the environmental considerations of a repair. Uh, the project is not going to cause any impacts requiring mitigation to adjacent wetlands. Uh, as a drainage authority, you are exempt from, uh, mitigation uh, caused by a repair, so long as it's consistent with Minnesota State Statute one-oh-three E. And I'll further classify that as you're exempt from impacts to non-type three, four, five, or open water wetlands. And what we see adjacent to CD Three is a lot of type two and six or, uh, you know, shrubby, wet meadow situations where you don't regularly have open water. So any impacts of those wetlands would be exempt from permitting through the Weather and Contamination Act. Additionally, um, any repairs that are undertaken consistent with Minnesota State Statute one-oh-three are exempt from permitting through the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, so there we're demonstrating the compliance with state and federal regulations. Uh, our preliminary opinion of possible construction costs there is, you know, we anticipate construction costs for a repair of the drainage system consistent of that, you know, tree clearing and the excavation. Uh, our estimate is around the hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollar mark. There's no need to replace any of the culverts because they are acceptable elevations and have sufficient capacity. We're estimating, you know, just over twenty-five thousand dollars in engineering fee to do construction management, uh, manage the contract, complete some observation, make sure that it gets repaired to the correct elevation, uh, and provide some record drawings, it's an important part of record keeping. Uh, and then, of course, we assume some, some local legal and administrative costs for county staff, bringing a total anticipated, uh, repair project cost to about a hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars. So when we put all of this back into the context of the standard of decision, are the repairs necessary? Uh, in the opinion of the engineer, yes. Uh, the accumulated sediment, heavy vegetation is acting as obstructions to the public drainage system, and by removing those items, there would be a restoration of the drainage capacity of the public drainage system. Um, are the repairs as recommended in the best interest of the lands affected by the drainage system? Uh, some important considerations here, and that determination is, is up to the Board of Commissioners acting as drainage authority. Uh, as Chris noted before, the benefits, the total benefit of the drainage system is two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars, and those exceed the estimated cost of construction of a hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, two-hundred dollars. Uh, it's also the repairs would be consistent with the intent of Drainage Authority obligations, meaning meeting your responsibilities under the drainage code. Uh, I will note that, uh, whether or not something is in the best interest of the land, it's not only a cost-benefit analysis, but it's a helpful piece of information, and that's why it's presented here. Uh, it's important to remember as a drainage authority that you have both rights and obligations under statute. Uh, and there is some opportunity to exercise discretion, um, but in this case, there is a petition, uh, so it's important to, uh, respond to that petition, uh, with the weight of the evidence. Uh, therefore, it is our recommendation as engineer that the, uh, repairs be completed as described in our repair report. And if that's to be, uh, ordered, we would anticipate a schedule of having that findings and orders prepared, you know, now in the summer of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, we have a quote package, write the solicit quotes from, uh, contractors in the area, uh, so that could be completed, uh, readily and then construct that project yet this fall. Uh, would not take terribly long due to the short length of drainage system. Of course, this schedule's subject to change based on availability of contractors and schedule and any action undertaken by the drainage authority. Uh, we would estimate that the project would only take about two weeks. So the next steps would be to adopt the findings in order for repair as you choose, uh, and then direct staff to solicit those quotes and abort the project. At this time, I'll entertain any questions, and then just note for the audience that, uh, both Chris Berger, County Engineer, and myself as the project manager from Houston Engineering on this, our contact information is available on this.
Thank you. Chris, you got anything to add before I open up the public comment period?
No, I have nothing to add, I think it's a very conclusive, uh, presentation of the repair report.
Mr. Chair, uh, one quick question, Garrett. Um, in your estimated costs for construction, did that include mobilization of equipment?
Yes, that's part of our preliminary opinion of, of construction cost.
And can I ask what you have for a dollar amount there for mobilization?
Yeah, let me see here.
Uh, twenty thousand.
I, I tend to believe the commissioner, but I'll, I'll.
I, I.
I see that.
I have that number ready, it's in the, it's in the repair report.
Yep.
Uh, estimating about twenty thousand dollars for mobilization.
Yep, okay, I just wanted to ask, thank you.
Mr. Chair, one quick clarification again?
Go ahead, Commissioner Slungay.
Uh, Garrett, in your number, it was a twenty percent contingency as well. Um, so that would be a total of thirty-six thousand, so we could actually, we've got some, some, uh, buffer built in there, correct?
Correct, and I will note as well that, you'll see, I have on the screen now the actual, uh, table from the reports. That construction subtotal is a hundred-and-twelve thousand, or just about a hundred-and-thirteen thousand for the construction costs for contracting itself. And I'll just note that that's below that threshold for a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand for the public bid process. Um, so that's why the county is able to solicit quotes in this case. Even though the anticipated total cost is that hundred-and-eighty-two area, um, the construction cost itself outside of administrative contingency and engineering is, is far below the threshold for municipal contracting law of a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars.
Thank you for that.
Anything else? Okay, at this point in time, we'll now open up for co- public comment. Uh, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the county board on ditch number three? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Good morning, just a quick point of inquiry. Uh, uh, my notice said this would also be the time for ditch nine. Will that, will ditch three proceedings conclude and ditch nine begin?
That is correct. That is correct. Anybody out there for ditch three? Any final call? Anyone out there wishing to adjust the county board on ditch number three? Seeing on the public comment period is now closed, the county board will now have the time for questions and staff and discussion. As a reminder to the audience, the public comment portion is closed. Any questions or comments from board members before we take action on this item?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kapinski.
I just want to make one, potentially two comments. I see we have the Sauk Rapids administrator here, Ross Olson. When we dump this water in, I think it's been brought up before, that there, that end of the Sauk Rapids might have to be cleaned out, too. So I just wanted to make sure that we're not just dropping water in and then we start flooding other areas, so I appreciate you being here for that.
Yep, that is correct. I was also in conversations with the city about this quite a few times, so they are well aware of that.
Yep, and then my last, my last note is, I know Clarence Todd is here, will be doing some petition with Mr. Bird after the fact, so I did talk to Chris about that paperwork. Those are my last two.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns, commissioners?
I'll have one question.
Commissioner Schlangen.
The direction of the water flow, is some going south by 23 and some goes up to Sauk Rapids? Is there a dividing point somewhere, or how does, how does the drainage work?
So, yeah, I can address that for Schlangen. So based on our repair report, from the beginning point of county ditch three, as it was established, as in the center of the old railroad alignment, that ditch will slope towards the north and west, towards Highway 10. So there's no dividing point within the boundaries of county ditch three. At that point, it's all going to be draining north and into the west. So anything, south and east of that point is still, you know, it's outside of the Drainage Authority's purview, so. We do have a responsibility as a road authority to address any, our culvert underneath East St. Germain, which is County Road 75 at that point, and we plan on addressing that from a road authority standpoint, at the same time, the Drainage Authority is, is, if it's so ordered, repairing the ditch. So I see those as kind of two separate things, but going to occur at the same time. Does that, does that answer your question?
So it's all flowing northwest?
And from, yeah, from the beginning of county ditch three, at that road alignment, it will all drain to the west, so.
Any other questions? What do the commissioners want to do with this?
Mr. Chair, can we have Michelle kind of give us a little bit of a overview on what she wants us to read?
Thank you, Michelle.
Since there was no public comment, I actually have the order ready to go. We do not need to continue until the next hearing, so I believe there is that option under number three to make the following findings in order. So if you guys would go through that today, then we should be able to get this order signed in this call.
Do we want to have Chris read the findings in?
Yes.
All right, so we'll go through the findings. I'll just start at one. So findings, item one. A petition dated February 10th, 2020 was received by the Benton County Auditor Treasurer on February 12th, 2020, requesting to repair county ditch number three pursuant to Minnesota Statute 103E.715. The Drainage Authority met on February 18th, 2020 at the Benton County Boardroom in Foley, Minnesota, accepted a petition for the repair of county ditch three, and appointed Christopher Bird to prepare an engineer's report pursuant to Statute 103E.715 subdivision two. The repair report was filed on May 4th, 2021. As part of the petition proceeding, the Drainage Authority, in consultation with the auditor, ordered a public hearing on the repair report. Notice of the hearing on the repair report was held on August 2nd, 2022, that's today, was provided by mail to the petitioners, owners of property and political subdivisions likely to be affected by the repair, in the repair report in accordance with Minnesota statute. As required under Minnesota Statute 103E.741, notice was also given to property owners determined by the engineer to be draining into the drainage system or benefiting from the drainage system but for which no assessment of benefits was made for the construction of the drainage system. Item six, on June 1st, 2021, the board determined that there were omitted properties that were benefited by county ditch number three but were not being assessed benefits, and that the benefits and damages determined in the original proceedings, as well as the benefited and damaged areas determined in the original proceedings, did not reflect current existing actual benefits and damages in benefited areas. The board stayed the petition for repair proceeding and ordered a viewer's repair report, redetermination of benefits, and appointed viewers in compliance with Minnesota statute. On May 3rd, 2022, the board adopted the viewer's report and the benefits and damages statement and ordered the redetermination of benefits, replaced the existing benefits for county ditch number three. The total benefits were determined to be $295,240 and zero cents. Item eight, the engineer's report for county ditch three estimated the cost of the repairs to be $182,000 and no cents. At the May 17th, 2022 public meeting, the board directed Nadine Inman, Auditor Treasurer, and Chris Bird, Public Works Director, to set a hearing for petition for repair of county ditch number three pursuant to Minnesota statute. A public hearing before the Drainage Authority was held on August 2nd, 2022 at 10:00 a.m. at the Benton County Boardroom in Foley. At the public hearing, engineer Chris Bird, along with Garrett Munson, with Houston Engineering, presented the engineer's report. The system is a 41, 4,100-foot open channel system that consists solely of a main trunk. The ditch flows south to north and discharges into the storm sewer system south of Highway 10. The original length of the drainage system has been reduced, and hydrology of the surrounding area has been altered via industrialization, so the amount of land has been benefiting from the ditch has been reduced. It is the southeast city of Sauk Rapids and Section 25 of Mendon Township. The ditch drains approximately 6.5 square miles of land in Mendon Township, Sauk Rapids Township, City of Sauk Rapids, and City of St. Cloud. The watershed is primarily commercial and services. The engineer recommended the repair of the entire drainage system of county ditch number three. The channel is poorly defined in several areas with significant sedimentation and heavy vegetation in the channel. There were sediment depths of up to approximately two feet observed in parts of the ditch. There was standing water of up to two feet in these areas. There are other issues such as barbed wire fence that to be removed for access to the ditch. There are also spoil piles likely from the original construction of the ditch that should be spread. County ditch just three does not intersect with any state listed public waters or public water wetlands. Ditch three does not intersect with wetlands identified in the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources' National Wetland Inventory. The wetlands identified with proximity to CD3 are type 1, 2, and 6, therefore, the repair will meet the exemption criteria. Based on the Minnesota DNR's Natural Heritage Information System, there is one state listed threatened endangered species within county ditch three, it is the blinding turtle. The county must use impact avoidance strategies when repairing the ditch. There is special concern for one moth series Whitney's underwent, the proposed repair will not impact this moth species habitat. The engineer's report contains all the details, plans, and specifications necessary to prepare and award a contract for the repairs. I'm going to skip item three because nobody, the one I have on the screen left space for any public comment. And fourteen, the Drainage Authority finds, consistent with the engineer's report, the public comments received at the public hearing on the engineer's report, and the entire record of proceedings, that the entirety of county ditch number three is out of repair, that the condition of county ditch number three impedes the flow of water and reduces the original hydraulic efficiency of the drainage system below the established, below that the established by the original construction and our subsequent improved condition of the drainage system. All right, now, want me to go through the orders?
Just one note I did add in the engineer section under number 11. As a repair will reduce flooding depth on adjacent parcels, will reduce stagnant water, it will improve management of the ditch system, the repairs are necessary and will restore the use of the ditch. I did add that provision in as well. So then I think actually if the board just motions and states within the order, that should cover us.
So Michelle, do you want us to read in the whole entire order from A through?
F.
F? Yeah.
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that the repair of Benton County ditch number three in location specified in these findings and recommend, recommended in the engineer's report is granted consistent with the engineer's recommendations. B, the auditor treasurer, Nadine Inman, and the board chair shall proceed and prepare the award, and prepare and award a contract for repair of the drainage system consistent with proceeding, procedures required in Minnesota State statute CH 103E and under Minnesota law. The contract must be for the repair described in the repair report and determined necessary by the Drainage Authority in the findings and order, and be prepared in the manner provided in Minnesota State 103E for the original drainage system construction. C, the cost of the repair shall be paid for from the funds in the maintenance account for county ditch number three and/or by assessment made to the properties benefited by the drainage system in the drainage system records. D, the auditor treasurer shall pay the damages as reported in the viewer's report, and in conformance with these proceedings, the damages paid shall be cost of the repair ordered herein. The auditor treasurer shall also add the benefits as reported in the viewer's report in conformance with these proceedings to benefit the determined as basis for the pro-rata assessment of the repair of the drainage system. E, the repair includes open channel excavation, clearing of trees, and brush establishment of vegetation. The repair will be consistent with the findings in the repair report. F, in all future proceedings related to the repairing, cleaning, improving, and altering the drainage system, the property benefited in the viewer's report hearing is part of the property benefited by the drainage system and must be assessed in the same manner, provide for the assessment of the property originally assessed for and included in the drainage system.
Do I have? We've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this? Beth, roll call, please.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Okay, at this point in time, the motion has passed, and the findings in order adopted.
I think we're ready to recess.
Okay, now, I apologize for ditch nine, we'll have to recess because we're going into a closed session, and hopefully that'll last, how long, Monty?
Probably about 15, 20 minutes or so. So, yeah, I'll have to ask folks to excuse themselves. So if we could do first is recess, recess ditch authority?
Yep, we'll recess ditch authority at this time.
And then we would need to reconvene county board.
And we'll reconvene the county board at this point in time. Point of inquiry, how do we get notice when you start again?
I will just open the door.
Yeah, we'll open the door.
Mr. Chair, typically, Mr. Anderson might have some comments that he would recommend you include in your motion to go to closed session, Scott, if you're inclined?
Thank you. We're going to close this session pursuant to 13 D05 subdivision 3B of the, of the open meeting law, which allows us to close a meeting if authorized by the attorney-client privilege. We're close this under the attorney-client privilege, we're required to...
You can just leave it open, that's fine.
We're required to state the specific grounds permitting the meeting to be closed, which I just stated, and the subject to be discussed. We'll be discussing the ongoing litigation in the case of Benton County Board of Commissioners versus the Auditor Treasurer Nadine Inman. We'll be talking in detail about proposed resolution and the ramifications of that and what that would mean for the county.
Thank you for that. So that'll be the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to go into closed session based off of the recommendation of our attorney, as he presented.
I'll second.
Take motion and a second, goes in closed session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And I want to know, Mr. Chair, for anyone that's viewing this meeting via live streaming or via go-to meeting, we, of course, need to shut those two down during a closed session, but we will resume streaming and go-to meeting in approximately 20 minutes.
Thank you for that.
All right, let me just...